We missed our last meeting, and I guess that was right around the time of Black Friday. So I guess I would just like to remind everybody to please consider shopping locally. We have a lot of many fine large and small retailers in our community. So when you have a choice, please think local. Thank you.
I'd like to make a brief comment around the police. There's a lot of pressure on the police around the country these days, and it puts pressure on Plainfield Police Department as well. I think we need to support them. They do a great job. They're well-trained for the kind of things we expect from them. And I think we should go out of our way to make sure that we support them wherever we can because they support us every way they know how to do also. A lot of things need to be done, but it's a very well-run department. So Commander, you can convey that to the others.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I'm sorry. I really neglected. It's my fault. I want to send condolences to Chief Conapek for the loss of his sister over the weekend. And hearts and prayers and thoughts go out to him and his family. So I'm terribly sorry. I neglected to say that.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this would be time for public comments. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting and executive session held on November 16th, bills paid and bills payable reports for December 7th, approval of the 2016 meeting schedules for the village board, committee of the whole workshop, coffee with the mayor, plan commission and zoning board of appeals, historic preservation commission, historic preservation commission subcommittees, police pension board, the police commission, and the advisory task force on economic development. Ordinance number 3244, decreasing the Class F liquor licenses to 14 and the Class K liquor licenses to 17 for the closing of derbans. And ordinance number 3245, increasing the Class F liquor licenses to 15 for more Plainfield LLC to be located at 24108 West Lockport Street, and increasing the Class O liquor licenses to four for Capri located at 24102 West Lockport Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through E under the consent agenda. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2015 tax levy public hearing. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing for the 2015 tax levy.
Open a public hearing on the 2015 tax levy?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. As required by state statute, this is the public hearing for the 2015 village of Plainfield tax levy. For some background and history, the extension that's being requested is $5,917,100. However, it is believed that the actual amount, the dollar amount the village will receive will be less than that once the equalized assessed value comes back in the spring of 2016. Based on the board's direction, staff will communicate with both Will and Kendall Counties that the intent is to extend the 2014 tax levy rate of .4669. This is a public hearing. At this point, we'd be looking for public comments on anything related to the tax levy for 2015.
If there are no public comments, we'd be seeking a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any comments or questions? Now we'd be seeking a motion to adopt ordinance number 3246 for the levying and collecting of taxes for the village of Plainfield, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2015.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 3246 for the levying and collecting of taxes for the village of Plainfield, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal years commencing on the first of May 2015.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 tax levy abatements.
Thank you. What you have in your packet are resolutions to eliminate the 2015 property tax levies for the village's outstanding bond issues. There are six of them in your packet. And historically, each year, the village does eliminate these property tax levies for each of the debt service payments that are coming due for the next year. And if these are not abated, if they're not eliminated, they would be extended to the village residents and businesses' property tax bills. The total abatement amount for each of, for the total of these six items within your packet is $4,810,375. So in essence, if this was extended and it was not approved to be eliminated, property taxes would ultimately almost double for the village portion of a residence property tax bill. And again, this has historically been abated from year to year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this. These are principal and interest payments for debt service as well, I mean, for water and sewer, the debt service fund, and the capital funds for the next fiscal year budget. The board has seen these within the budgets that you've seen in our workshops in the last few months, and they're consistent with prior direction and policy.
Are there any comments or questions?
Do we have to vote on individually, or can we vote on as a group?
The board would like to vote on these by omnibus vote. We would need a motion to vote on items A through F by omnibus vote. Then we would need another motion to approve the items.
Michelle? Do we need the numbers to first? Okay, go ahead.
You're looking for a motion to vote by omnibus vote. I move that we vote on these A, one through six with an omnibus vote.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve, to adopt resolution number 1716, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation refunding bonds, series 2005B. Resolution number 1717, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation bond series 2007. Resolution number 1718, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation refunding bond series 2010. Resolution number 1719, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation refunding bonds, series 2012. Resolution number 1720, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation refunding bonds, series 2013. And resolution number 1721, abating the 2015 tax levies for the general obligation refunding bonds, series 2014.
I make a motion to adopt resolutions number 1716, 1717, 1718, 1719, 1720, and 1721, abating the 2015 tax levies.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda-
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. Before we move on, Mayor Collins, you know, this is almost one of my favorite times is when I see Ms. Pleckham's pie chart here describing the amount of money that the village of Plainfield collects in revenue throughout the year and the amount of money that we receive that we get to spend on a dollar. For every dollar that's collected in a taxing bill, the village of Plainfield gets 4.87 cents. Or out of $100, you get $4.87. That's really a minuscule amount of money in order to provide all the services that the village of Plainfield provides for its citizens. Oftentimes, people confuse their tax bill thinking it's entirely the village of Plainfield, but that's really a misnomer because we only collect 4.87% of your tax bill. That goes, as Mr. Murphy has stated in the past, and it's always been described by everyone, it goes for police protection, public works, sewage removal, water delivery, street maintenance, administration of programs, cultural enrichment, et cetera, et cetera. There's an awful lot delivered, and I'm very proud of the fact that so much is delivered to the citizens of the village of Plainfield for such a very small amount of money. And this is an open message to all taxpayers. Your money is being well-guarded and well-spent. Thank you.
Can contrast that with the fire department takes 10 cents out of every dollar, nearly double what the village does, just as an FYI for those that are listening.
One definitely would never, obviously, trustee Wajow would never diminish other districts. But, no, I realize that. But there's one in particular, the school district gets 65% of your tax bill. I'm not saying they don't deserve it, but Will County Forest Preserve gets a good percentage. School district, Jolia Junior College, Plainfield Park District, Plainfield Library, Plainfield Fire Protection Township and others. It's 100% of a bill. But again, I'm going to reiterate, Plainfield Village gets 4.87%, and that's not a lot of money. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is site plan, landscape, and sign ordinances text amendment. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance for text amendments to the site plan, landscape, and sign ordinances.
Yes, thank you. This matter is coming back before the board. As you recall, this matter came before the board a number of months ago before I committed the whole meeting for a general discussion. As you know, just to refresh your memory, our staff has made a major effort to not only streamline specifically the site plan review ordinance, the village's landscape ordinance, and sign ordinance. As you know, pursuant to our business-friendly policies, we are in the process of trying to streamline a number of ordinances to make them more straightforward, to make them more simple, to make them more, let's say, business-friendly. And based on that fact, as I've already identified, both of these ordinances have been generally streamlined from approximately 29 pages to eight pages. What you have before you is a final draft which really reflects some of the specific comments from the village board at a previous call meeting. And also, this matter did go for formal tax amendment before the planning commission. The planning commission did have some comments. Again, just to very, to refresh your memory, the major changes to the site plan review ordinance really directs, is directed more towards landscaping. Again, we've reduced the number of plantings from 15 plantings per 30 linear feet to 10. We also have limited this actual height to, actually, we have two proposals, either three feet or four feet. So we're looking for some board input of whether the appropriate height of landscaping along the landscape areas would be. Secondly, we have required that all areas next to access points or driveways specifically minimize landscaping, that all landscaping be set back at least a minimum of 20 feet, that there are no shade trees or ornamental trees be planted within those, what I call view vistas, to minimize any hazardous obstruction of sightlines or any potential aspects regarding traffic. Those are the major changes as it relates to landscaping. There was also a very healthy discussion actually at the planning commission as it relates to drive-throughs. As you know, we've had some negative feedback over the past several years from residents where projects come in which they're adjacent to residential areas with regards to drive-throughs. Actually, the planning commission actually had some reservations about the proposed 200 feet. They actually proposed, I think, 150 feet pursuant to the previous board direction. I think there was a general consensus that 200 feet was appropriate. Thirdly, one other aspect, there was a healthy discussion at the planning commission as it relates to the site plan review ordinance, there was general discussion that they did support using vinyl for townhomes. I know the village board had, there was pretty much a consensus that fiber cement board would be appropriate, but the planning commission did have some concerns about that. So I'm just kind of very briefly describing some of the discussions at the planning commission and kind of highlighting some of the major issues as it relates to the actual site plan review ordinance. Directing your attention to the actual village's sign ordinance, again, one of the major changes is for larger commercial projects, we are allowing by right a monument sign up to 15 feet in height from the current regulation of 10 feet. Again, we're proposing that to be, I think, more consistent with some of the larger projects. What they're looking for for signage, again, is still monument style. We're not proposing to allow pylon signs or something like that, which would diminish the village's community standards. But we think going up to 15 feet for a larger, for larger commercial projects, we would be generally consistent, that's really consistent with the existing marketplace development at 119th Street and Route 59 where Coles is located. That's an actual 15-foot monument sign. We're not proposing any major dramatic changes to temporary signage. We are streamlining some of the language with regards to that to allow perhaps a more efficient enforcement policy as it relates to political signs. We're not proposing any major changes to political signage. As it relates to LEDs, one of the aspects I'd like to bring up for discussion for the village board, as you see, we're seeing a major trend for more and more LED signs. It appears to be the popular trend for commercial signage. Almost every, I shouldn't say every, but a large proportion of commercial users are looking for some LED aspect now. As you know, some of the North Shore upscale communities simply don't allow them, but most collar suburbs do allow them. The question is, do we want to limit them to approximately 50%, which is where our current ordinance allows, or do we want to limit them to some other number, whether it's a third or a lower percentage? Staff is looking for the village board input. So in sum and substance, both, all three of these ordinances are attempting to make the ordinances more simple while maintaining the village's standards. As you know, the village takes great pride over the past 15 years in maintaining a certain character of our commercial corridors. As you can see, Route 59 corridor, it really incorporates a certain standard, which I think is on par with most of the surrounding communities. In fact, I would submit respectfully, it actually exceeds what most of the surrounding communities have done as it relates to commercial development. With regards to townhomes or multifamily, we are requiring that they be constructed with all face brick or fiber cement board to make sure that what limited amount of future multifamily developments actually developed in Plainfield, that it be, again, maintained at a certain high standard, consistent with the village's overall community standards. So with that, I will conclude my staff report. I've been more than happy to answer any questions that the village board may have, or, and I'm specifically looking for some direction as it relates to landscaping height and also LED signage. Thank you.
As far as LED signage, are we talking about 15-foot signs having LED on them?
That's correct. I mean, right now, there's nothing which will prohibit any of our signs. Right now, you're allowed to have a 10-foot monument sign. 50% of that sign could be theoretically LED. So theoretically, pursuant, based on the board's direction, you could have 50% of the 15-foot sign LED. I'm not sure you want that, but you could have it.
I don't want that. What I'm thinking of is smaller signs like the library sign. It's already at 50%, I believe, LED. But it's small enough that it's not obnoxious. But if we're talking about any sign having up to 50%, then I think we need a smaller amount, or possibly phrase it as a total square footage for the LED sign. That may be another way to get at it, because I don't think you want a huge sign with 50% LED that blinds you coming down the road. So I would suggest we consider a rewrite that limits it to three feet by four, maybe 12 square feet, something like that, on the LED. As far as the 200 feet or the 150, I think we, I'd like the 150 myself. I think the 200 is a bit excessive. It's a little bit hard to find, but that's why I think the board needs to rule on that. And as the bushes and driveways and so on, right now, four feet's pretty high. I'm inclined to go three feet, although that may require removal of a lot of shrubs, because not many shrubs stay at three feet. But on the other hand, four feet and more, you can't see cars coming out, particularly where I do often on the Myers parking lot. You know, the cars around you before you even know they're there. I'm in a relatively high car. Now, if somebody had a small car, they might even be able to see over the bush at all. So I would go with the three feet. My recommendation is those three things. Is the rest of the board here somewhere, though?
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment. Reduction of plantings, I think that's a positive thing in two aspects, I guess. Number one, first of all, it's going to lower the cost for new businesses coming in, and then also, it's going to continue to allow for that visibility issue. So from the visibility perspective, I would agree. I think lower is better. So the three feet would be more ideal, and I would like to see that as opposed to the higher four feet. The drive-through, 250 or 150, I don't know if it makes a difference, because if I understand it, we're, there's still a variance option. So if a unique situation still comes forward, we could still potentially see that, correct? Even if it's within the 200 feet, correct?
Right.
Vinyl, you mentioned vinyl. I don't, I'm not, I don't have a big issue about vinyl with multifamily. We allow it on single families. I guess my question would be, why not on townhomes or other multifamily?
Well, I think we did have a healthy discussion even at the village board. I think that we polled the village board members. My recollection is the majority of the members did want hardy board. So I'm not sure if that's still the case, but when we did have that discussion, there was a pretty good discussion about that, which would hopefully maintaining, maintain overall cost, consistent with the current trend of what we're seeing in Plainfield.
And then just from a consistency standpoint, your summary, I think, talked about on the drive-through, 200 feet to the closest residential structure, where the other one talked about, I think, the lot line or something. So I'm not sure if it's from lot line to structure or structure to structure.
I think it's structure to structure. I think I have to refine that, but I think my intent was from structure to structure. Remember, there's a 40-foot requirement regardless of a landscape berm or landscape area within that 200 feet or 150 feet, whatever the board desires. So we're already talking about it, existing 40-foot landscape area, which again, has to have 100% opacity between the residential area and the commercial area, regardless if there's a drive-through or not.
Okay. On the signs, I, just a little bit off of what you were asking for, but attention-getting devices are prohibited? That would include flashing type signs?
Yes, yes. I mean, that's not, that's, we do have some regulations, even with LED signs, there are some limitations in, you know, how quickly we can change a message. We don't want anything which would distract or in some ways distract traffic. And also, you'll see there's specific regulation which limits LED signs to be a certain distance from intersections. So there's no confusion with traffic control devices.
The other comment I think I made during the discussion in the prior meeting, and it wasn't captured, and maybe rightfully so, but I'll bring it up again, and that's the grand opening signage. And we define that within 60 days immediately after opening or reopening. And a number of times, I think, businesses want to do what they term a slow or soft opening, so they might not have their official grand opening, maybe for two or three months after the actual opening of the restaurant or facility. So I don't know if we could maybe extend that or maybe modify it at some point. And then the sidewalk signs, I don't know, did we ever, the small sidewalk signs, are those going to be required to be within the sidewalk in front of the business advertising? So in other words, a competitor couldn't put their sign three doors down in front of a neighboring store?
Correct. The intent is to, you would only be able to put a, that type of A-frame sign or sidewalk sign in front of your business. You couldn't put it down the street or at some intersection.
Okay. And then the last thing was the wall signs. I know we had a lot of discussion about visibility and some of the centers that are further off, and we talked, or I asked about maybe the, you know, a distance factor. So in other words, if it's X feet off the main highway, maybe it's instead of one square foot per linear foot, maybe it's double to allow some increased visibility for the buildings that sit farther back. Was there any more thought around that?
I think there was some thought from staff and actually the planning commission to discuss that. That might require more signage, would require more EFIS, which I think would have an impact on overall design of some of the retail centers. As you know, most retail centers, not all, but have what we call EFIS bands above the windows to allow signage or to allow raceway signage. To double that, you know, basically, you're basically also having an impact on overall design. You may have to have more EFIS on these sign bands to allow the larger signage. I think most of the issues that we've identified with regards to signage is not necessarily the distance, but simply obstructions, i.e. outlots, buildings in front of those inline retail spaces in which you cannot see the signage. But it has nothing, you could triple the size of the signage, the actual wall signage on some of these centers, and you still wouldn't see it from 59 because the buildings are blocking it. It has, it's irrelevant with regards to the actual square footage. It's simply have outlots in front of it so you can't see the signage. There was also a healthy discussion at the planning commission. There was some heartburn, to be honest, about the signage that currently, as you recall, we did approve a variance for Ross. And I think there are some planning commissioners who are not, were not particularly happy with that. What they have identified is perhaps overwhelming signage, which is perhaps not consistent with the overall character of Plainfield. Clearly, it's quite different than what the Barnes and Noble signage used to be. So whether that's a trend that the village board wants to go in, obviously, that's something you can discuss, and that's your prerogative.
I guess from your last point on the LEDs, I guess I would agree with Commissioner Lamb in regards to, you know, maybe limiting it to, I think you have 30% in the new proposal, and then maybe a maximum size depending on the height of the overall monument sign.
I would just like to say that there's been numerous points brought out by both two trustees to the right. What does the other board members feel about this? I mean, are we going to move forward? Are we going to address one, two, or five of the items that have just been proposed?
And the issue of the vinyl siding, I'm, I'd like to stay with our current plan, not having the vinyl siding. As far as the drive-throughs, the, is the issue, from what I understand, is the speaker noise?
Correct.
Is there any way to possibly regulate the speaker noise rather than go through all this construction?
We do have a, as you know, we have a decibel regulation. I think it's 56 decibels at the property lines. We already regulate that. Unfortunately, that doesn't, even if you can comply with our ordinance for decibels, and it's still many unfortunate causes and issues with some of the residents.
56 decibels is still pretty loud?
Well, if you listen to some of the residents, it is, especially at, you know, 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock or 7 o'clock in the morning. And that's, you know, that's the kind of feedback the board's been receiving, or did receive when Dunkin' Donuts wanted to go downtown, and there was a lot of heartburn from the residents about that decibel level. And even if it did comply with the ordinance, there were still concerns by the residents about the potential negative impact on their property from the speakers. So we can try to minimize the speaker noise, but I'm not sure that would fully address the residents' concerns in the future.
I'd be interested to see what the residents who are concerned about it, what decibel level they'd be comfortable with. I mean, if it's, if it's an oversensitive hearing, well, none. But maybe if it's somebody with oversensitive hearing or not, I mean, everybody's different. I understand that. But I'd like to, I'd like to see before we change wholesale throughout the village, if it's just a few people and what they're, they're comfortable with.
Just as a question, Michael, how many complaints have we had about Starbucks?
None. We had a lot of complaints before they were approved, as you recall. There was a lot, again, a lot of residents objected and-
Nate, that does a brisk business over there.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, there are a lot of times that there are reasons people don't want places built. And now that it's there, I'm interested to see throughout the village, how many residents actually are upset with the drive-throughs that are close to their house? And then maybe the village can go out there a decibel meter and test it to see.
I still think there may be some logic just simply not to have a minimum requirement. And as you know, all drive-throughs are special uses, so it's a case by case.
You're going to pick it, you're going to approve it or not approve it regardless. So the whole point is moot, right?
Yeah, I mean, in some cases, 200 feet may not be enough. In other cases, 100 feet may be enough.
Correct.
You'll review each case as it comes through. So there may be some logic of not incorporating a minimum requirement.
Right.
Our staff was trying to be proactive, because I'll be honest, we've had, we've told developers no before they've ever come before the planning commission and village board, because we're getting so much opposition, opposition from the residents.
That's, I was going to ask the same question the mayor asked about Starbucks. That's, I was going to ask the same question the mayor asked about Starbucks. It was a big issue before, a non-issue since, and that's why I would go with a hundred and fifty feet. I think it's adequate. We need to vary it from there, and then so be it, but I think it's adequate. I don't, people have a lot of anticipation of problems that actually don't materialize once things get done.
Okay. Just a couple reflections on the different points that were brought up by different trustees. Number one, or there is in no particular order, just eighth order, drive-throughs. You know what I use as a basis for a drive-through? Would you want it in your backyard? Where you're living right now? Would you want to drive-through that's a hundred feet away from you, a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet away from you? Would you be able to live with it? If you can say yes, then you can vote on it here. Oftentimes, we don't have that option of saying, oh, they're going to put a drive-through in my residential neighborhood, but there's always a possibility something else could go through. For the young students who are here, there's a particular term. It is reflected often in studies of government and people's protest of things. The term is an acronym, it's called NIMBY, N-I-M-B-Y, and what it stands for is not in my backyard. And an awful lot of people have, they protest something because they don't want it in their backyard, and they have a justification for saying that. In particular, the one I said about a drive-through. An awful lot of people will protest, a, drive-through, because the lights are blaring, the headlights, the speakers, et cetera, et cetera, the extra congestion. They have the right to say it, and don't, being a NIMBY, not in my backyard, is not a crime. It's a justification for you doing something. Another point that was brought up is on siding. I have a three-quarter vinyl home. It's a very nice home, and things can be done well. I think there's a saying my brother has oftentimes, a lot of people have a lot of taste, but it's all bad. If you do it correctly and you do something in a proper fashion, and you follow our guidelines, which are stringent, it can be done well. Vinyl siding is not, it's not something that should be simply cast to the wayside and say, we have to have a more expensive thing. Because we have to take into consideration, in the village of Plainfield, we have to take into consideration, everybody has a right to live here at a certain price level. There's nothing wrong with that. I mean, we don't have to, every house has to be on twelve thousand square foot lot, costs four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and be a premier location. It doesn't. We have to arrange for everyone. And I brought this up before. I think what we're falling short, and I wish some developers would follow through on this particular idea, housing for seniors, not a nursing home. I mean, real viable housing. When seniors want to downsize and get into a smaller residence, we do not promote it in the village of Plainfield. Maybe someday it will happen. When it comes to landscaping, I think about Joliet. What can I say about Joliet? I was born there. After that, it went downhill. Nah, I love Joliet. It's a great, great place. But what bothers me oftentimes, we have developments, and you go down certain roads going into the west side of Joliet, different, but there's no landscaping. It's simply barren. There are homes sitting there, it looks like something from a nineteen thirty-two Flash Gordon movie, where there are little houses, they look like a cheap part of the Monopoly game. And I think to myself, we have to have standards, and the standards that we have in our guidelines are very good. Some people don't, they don't like them, but I say, you know what, we have to maintain it, and the best way of maintaining it is going through all of these procedures. I know oftentimes, people become bored with discussion of site plans, landscaping, sign ordinance, but it's absolutely necessary. Mr. Trustee O'Rourke was on the planning and zoning board for ten years, and this is close to his heart. I know it is, because he is an expert on these different things, and he thinks about it, and he brings it forward to the public and Mr. Lamb and the rest of the trustees. Like I say, it can become boring to some people, but it is absolutely necessary. And I think, I won't say anymore.
So, in summary, I've heard a couple of different ideas, all of which are, as you pointed out, trustee, very brilliant and quite salient. However, there are some competing ideas there, so I might suggest that village staff takes all of your ideas back, and we not ask for a motion on this tonight. We will collect those thoughts and come back to you at another time with these items for consideration at a future meeting.
Excellent recommendation.
Next item on the agenda is Academy Building Myers. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two forty-seven, approving a special use for an inn at one fifty-one oh six South Fox River Street.
I make the motion to consider approving a special use for an inn at one five one oh six South Fox River Street.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a question. Inns often have restaurant or food-serving capability. Is that planned in this case or not?
No, there will be no breakfast or, there'll be no food, nothing will be served.
Okay, so it takes care of the health issues. So, it's really just taking a historic building and using the bedrooms as guest rooms?
That's correct.
Great idea.
I had some, so I didn't see it in the summary, so is there a number of rooms that we're speaking of, and what's included? Are there bathrooms?
Yes, there's three bedrooms. The second floor is being completely renovated. Each bedroom will have a dedicated individual bathroom. So, each bedroom as relates to the inn will have a bathroom within that room. So, there'll be actually three bathrooms on the second floor, and there will actually also be a separate entrance, dedicated entrance as part of the house. So, guests will have, will be isolated or separate from the first-floor dwelling unit itself.
So, Michael, I couldn't find it in our ordinances, the difference between, bed and breakfast was identified, but an inn or hotel was not. In your mind, what is the difference between, say, an inn, a hotel versus a bed and breakfast?
I think clearly, a bed and breakfast between that and inn, they're very similar. I think that obviously, bed and breakfast, they do serve food. I think they're, in fact, they are very similar in use itself. This is clearly not bed and breakfast, because the applicants made it quite clear that no food will be served, which actually probably helps the local restaurants downtown for the limited number of guests. Again, remember, we're talking about three bedrooms, and our probability that they will not be rented out at the same time. So, it'll be a very, very limited impact on the neighborhood itself.
But I guess I have to ask the question, there's some things in, I guess, in the hotel or in the industry known as the single resident occupancy, the SRO.
Right.
Is there anything that would preclude these rooms from being rented out, you know, kind of on a monthly or weekly or whatever?
Yes, it would be. We actually have definitions, definitions to the zoning ordinance, which basically identifies what SRO, we don't allow SROs in Plainfield. And so, there is specific language which basically defines an inn. It's a very intermittent, limited stay, same with the hotel. So, once, obviously, you get into more of a long-term, whether it's a monthly or even a bi-weekly, I think then you're getting into closer to a limited dwelling or an SRO, and that would be very specifically prohibited. So, there's language in zoning ordinance. That's something we had concerns about from day one. But this is not, again, for the record, this is not, intended not to be an SRO.
Okay, so if we were to move forward with a favorable recommendation, an SRO would not be allowed at this location?
That's correct.
Thank you.
What's the max number of days they're allowed to rent out the facility?
The actual zoning ordinance talks about, I don't recall, there's an actual limited number of days other than, you know, typical hotel. So, you know, if you wanted to incorporate special use, something you could do, whether it's two days, three days, I think that would be something that might be reasonable. Once you get into weeks, obviously, then we're, I think, more consistent with what Mr. Trustee O'Rourke has identified.
Well, that's my concern. I mean, I can go to the Hilton and rent out a hotel room for a month if I wanted.
You could.
They're not going to deny me, but I'm concerned that this may happen downtown.
Right. And so, I think it'd be reasonable to incorporate some type of duration. And what you think's reasonable, that's something I'd, staff would look, you know, if somebody wanted to stay there for a week, is that too long? If somebody wanted to stay there for three days, is that too long? I think board, staff, there's really nothing specifically that, you know, it's a kind of gray area of what constitutes a dwelling.
I'd like to be just short of what constitutes a dwelling.
So, I think staff would be looking for village board. I think staff, you know, five days would be, I think that's one suggestion, less than a week.
Commissioner here?
I'm sorry? Actually, the position, I don't see the, the issue is actually here.
Oh, I guess the question would be to them, what would they be open? Or you find?
Could you identify yourself, please?
Jennifer Myers.
Excuse me, Jennifer, is the mic on there?
Yes, Jennifer Myers.
I think the question that trustee was asking was, what would be a limit, if you were to consider a limit on the amount of nights that somebody could consistently rent in your inn?
Absolutely. We don't anticipate longer than a standard vacation, but the Illinois law and the Illinois Bed and Breakfast Act, which allows you not to serve food and still be considered a bed and breakfast under that act, only allows ten calendar days within, or ten days within a calendar year.
You were bringing up, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah. Would you be seeking a liquor license at all in the future for this establishment?
No.
No, at all?
No, not at this time, no.
So, does this actually fall under bed and breakfast, then?
It falls under the definition under the Illinois statute, but not under ordinance.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't fall under an ordinance, but, I mean...
Because it wouldn't be allowed in that zoning, is that why it's not considered under that?
Well, the B-5 does allow either a hotel or an inn. It doesn't identify, believe it or not, it doesn't identify.
Which is really weird, because you could do a bed and breakfast in any residential area, but not in the B-5.
Right. I mean, really, we should allow bed and breakfasts in the B-5, because, I mean, every, it's classic uses of B-5, I mean, bed and breakfasts are downtown throughout the United States. I mean, just think Charleston.
Right, something to consider, I guess, in the future.
In some ways, this is very similar to bed and breakfast, but it doesn't really fall within the right hole, so to speak, so we've identified as an inn, which I think is generally consistent with the downtown.
So, do you think we need to identify that language?
I think so.
So, we can incorporate a stipulation that no more than ten days within a calendar year.
I'd like to make one comment, Mayor. You know, communities that are allegedly desirable destination spots, St. Charles, Geneva, Naperville.
I'll start over. Spots, my microphone wasn't on, but I think I speak loudly. Desirable destination spots in the communities nearby, St. Charles, Geneva, Naperville. Now, I think Plainfield can fall into that category also. I really encourage you to promote the whole idea, and if we could possibly help bring about the idea of a bed and breakfast. Oftentimes, people, just for the sake of our trustees and myself, people want to get away from the chain concept of parking themselves out by the mall on a highway, to have the, just to have the luxury of being in downtown Plainfield, be able to walk, go to the restaurants. I think price point is going to discourage anyone with a semi parking out on the street, staying for two months. I think they'll go somewhere else, for the most part. Now, I really encourage the whole idea. We got a cupcake ordinance, we got a chicken ordinance, and there's no reason we can't have a B and B ordinance, bed and breakfast, in the near future. I really encourage you doing it, and it's really refreshing news. Thank you.
Yeah, I would support the ten days. In ten days, you can eat a number of different restaurants, and there's at least ten good ones down there, so hopefully, people will stay ten days. But I think that's a reasonable, being the bed and breakfast ordinance, probably makes sense.
I just have one more question, Michael, than, when, in the public hearing, I apologize because I didn't get the minutes to the planning and zoning, but was there any concerns or comments from the neighbors?
Only one, Mrs. Anderson did appear. She resides across the street. She wanted to make sure that the house was going to be restored to historical character. The applicant is actually, will be landmarking this house in the future, will be restoring it to its original appearance or historic appearance, removing the synthetic siding. So, the answer is yes. This house will be restored to its original historic character. It'll be a future landmark. So, to answer Mrs. Anderson's concern directly, this house is being completely restored, very sensitive to the overall historic character of that area.
So, the only concern from any neighbors is being addressed?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two forty-seven, approving a special use for an inn at one fifty-one oh six South Fox River Street, and to include the stipulation to limit rentals to ten calendar days within a year. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators report?
None tonight.
Management services report?
No report.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning department report?
Public works.
Building department report?
Operations reported. Glad to answer any questions.
Public works report?
Thank you. Just have a few brief items this evening. As the board is aware, this past year, we had a contractor complete the landscaping maintenance work along Route fifty-nine during the past summer. As part of the past contract, they would come out and actually mow and pick up debris once a week throughout the entire corridor. Keep in mind, this is a seven-mile-long corridor. It's not only the islands, but it's also the right-ofways on either side of the roadway too as well, so there's quite an extensive amount of mowing that needs to take place. They also take care of all the maintaining and replacing plantings out in their area, weeding of the different beds. There's some extensive work that has to be done in the viaduct area specifically, adding mulch to the entire viaduct area and all the plantings that are out there too as well, and taking care of the weeds as well along that area. We noticed just through our own observation that the contractor did a very, very good job this year. It adds to the look and feel of the community. We talk about a number of plantings. There are over five hundred plantings that need to be maintained along that seven-mile stretch, and Fazio Landscaping really did an outstanding job, and that's a feedback that we had gotten from many residents too as well, that it really did look nice. We did, earlier this year, we bid this project out, and we received two bids, one's from Fazio and one from Greenscape, and they were within five hundred dollars of each other. So, understanding that we had really had a good experience with Fazio this past year as far as quality of work, I did approach the owner and ask him if they would be willing to provide the same service for the upcoming year in two thousand and sixteen at the same price that they had for this previous year. And the owner took me a day, or it took a day or so to get back to me, but he said that he would be willing to keep that same price. If the board approves this this evening, Fazio would take care of Route fifty-nine again, and then I would anticipate that we would rebid the contract and maybe even consider a multi-year contract for future contracts too as well. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is anticipated in the budget, and it's worked very well this past year.
As Alan pointed out the other, we only bid it out for a single year this year so that we could see if it was something we liked and felt that it was a responsive and responsible approach toward handling our needs. We found out that it is, and it, not only did Alan remark that we've seen their work to be high-quality, we actually received quite a number of remarks from the driving public and from our residents over how good Route fifty-nine looked last year. So, we're very happy with how that's been performed, and just wanted to make sure we added that detail as well.
Yeah, from my perspective, it sounds like they over-delivered on our expectations above and beyond, and there are no increase in price, which sounds like a fabulous contractor to maintain a relationship with. I'm not, I know we have obligations to bid, but on the other hand, I'd really like to make sure we get quality service, and when you have it demonstrated, I think it's a great way to go. And in this particular case, I'd waive the official bidding process and award it to Fazio.
I just have two comments. It sounds like everybody is happy with the value that we're getting for our money, so that's always a positive thing. And then, number two, it appears that when they were bid out earlier, that the lowest bid ended up being a local business. So, I think it's great that if we can go with the local business and still end up with the cheapest price, I think that's a win-win for everybody.
So, we need a motion?
So, we need a motion to move this forward?
I move that we waive bidding and authorize the village president to execute an agreement with Fazio Landscaping for 2016 Illinois Route 59 landscape maintenance contract, at the same price provided in 2015, a total cost of $59,340.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, the next item that I have is consistent with the village's strategic plan, we actually have, if, Michael, you can go to the next slide, we have a depiction here of Route 59 and 135th Street, as the board is aware, this intersection and just generally connectivity of sidewalks and pathways came up as a discussion as part of the strategic plan, also as part of the transportation plan within the village, and this is kind of a key location where you can see, there are sidewalks and/or bike paths on each leg of this intersection, but there are no crossings at this location. So, that was, it's a good intersection to take a closer look at, and try and move that project forward, and then there also have been some questions or suggestions about adding additional turn lanes at intersections, and this is a twofold project where we can take a look at both of those items as part of a traffic-transportation study. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Orban, and she's going to talk a little bit about the technical side of how Baxter and Woodman proposes to collect the data, and then what happens with the data from there, and then she'll answer all the tough questions.
Thank you, Ellen, good evening. I guess there's two components to the study, the results of which will be summarized in a technical memorandum, given to staff for their consideration. The first component that Ellen touched on is the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity across 135th Street and Illinois 59, the sidewalks and bike paths go up to the intersection, but then Illinois 59 and 135th Street become a barrier. So, we'll just summarize based on, you know, IDOT and ADA guidelines, what requirements would have to be satisfied, such as ADA ramps, push buttons, pedestrian signals, pavement markings, and so summarize the impacts to the overall intersection. The second component is to evaluate the operations at the intersection in terms of traffic. So, what we're going to do is go out, and we have some video equipment that will, we set out two cameras, we set some timers, we turn them on, and it records the, all the movements at the intersection, and we used to do it manually, where someone would sit there from six in the morning till six at night, and count, you know, how many buses and trucks and passenger vehicles, it's more automated now and much more accurate, and so we're going to take those results, and as you can see in your packet, we're going to take a look at what the traffic is out there today, we call it level of service, where we summarize the delay that vehicles experience at the intersection, and we'll evaluate a couple of possibilities, which would be adding northbound or southbound right turn lanes, or eastbound and westbound right turn lanes, and see each movement, such as like a southbound right or southbound through, all of those, we'll present those results to the board for their consideration.
Great news, thank you.
Excites me. I just have one question, and you talked about the two phases, and maybe it's not necessarily a third phase, but as part of that study, will, would we be able to determine whether the signals could be better synchronized, in other words, the timing of the signals when it turns red and green, would that also be able to be looked at with this study?
Do you mean in terms of the interconnection with other signals?
No, just with that intersection, so in other words, if the light is, you know, east-west and traffic's backing up, and it's taking people three green lights to get through, if we added five seconds to that green light, you know, does it affect where, you know, five more cars, or three more cars can get through, and yet the other side's still not backing up, and it's not an unreasonable delay, so just kind of look at the timing of what's there today, and if there could be any tweaks, because I understand that if, you know, if we get to a point where we're looking at adding right turn lanes or pedestrian crossings and those kinds of things, obviously that becomes very expensive, and it has to be budgeted and everything else, but if we look at the light timing, maybe that's something we could do in the short term until we get the other improvements in...
Certainly.
Is that possible, or is that what, different phase of what would be technically possible?
You know, the video will show if the area is queued and it's cleared, so you're going to see in peak traffic, because we've been up there at 135th Street during rush hour, and the east-west lanes, or the eastbound or westbound lanes, depending on the time of the day, they may have to wait for a cycle or two cycles of the light to...
Or three.
And the video will show whether the lane is cleared or not, so I don't know if that's an easy answer to your question, the timing of the light is usually done physically, having someone out there that's certified by IDOT, along with an IDOT employee to read time lights, but remember, and I think Mayor had mentioned it about the south section, if we change the timing of the Route 59 light at 135th Street to favor 135th Street, it may throw off the timing at 127th and 119th Street, so really have to look at it big-picture wise.
No, and I understand, alls I'm saying is if we have that data, and I know it's, you know, more than somebody just out there looking and say, oh, that really backs up, you know, if you guys have the expertise to be able to analyze those videos or whatever to say, you know what, yeah, we might be able to do this, maybe it's something more we should look into or consider, that's all. Thank you.
I think too, though, you still have to consider that if you put pedestrian crossing there, as soon as that's pushed for the pedestrian to cross, it might take five cycles of that light before the timing gets back.
No, I know, but I'm saying, short-term, because we might not have the money to do that for a while.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you have to remember that too, because it's like five cycles before it gets back into sync, so, just for your information.
It's a very complicated intersection, I go through it probably three or four times every day. Look forward to seeing the evaluation of this, I think the turn lanes will make a difference. I'm not quite sure what impact the bike lanes extension will have, because you go to the east side of 59, bike lanes don't go anywhere, they certainly go west, but going east, it stops before you can get to the river, before you can get to the park area, and on the Menards side, there's no, well, minimal sidewalk, so, but, study's well worth it, it's a very busy intersection, it's probably our number-one problem intersection-wise, we may have more trouble in Lockport than 59, but that's straightforward, this one's got a lot of traffic trying to get onto I-5, and it's always going to back up, so, anything we can get insights on how to improve, that'd be great.
If we were to talk about strategic plan, part of our background findings in this report are providing improved pedestrian accommodations is a high priority. Think about the three intersections, Lockport and Route 59, which is the entrance into the downtown area, 135th and Route 59, Route 59 and 126, you take your life into your hands trying to cross one, trying to go from east to the west side of the street, it's almost an impossibility. One of my grandsons goes Indian Trail, he said, "Grandpa, you can't walk, you gotta, you gotta get catapulted across the street, nobody can ever see you," like I say, you take your life in your hands trying to cross Route 59. Pedestrians are not visible, and we have to start taking into consideration, not worrying about how the cars turn in the corner, allowing people to go from east to west, north to south in this town, it's almost an impossibility right now. And for senior citizens, some that perhaps are on this board, I know darn well, they, Mr. Lamb, you obviously have an awful lot of trouble getting across the street, but anyway, so I know that has to be one of your major concerns. Okay. But I really champion this idea, it's a great start, and we should pursue it, thank you.
During your operation evaluation of the intersection, will you be looking at the impact of the red light cameras and the possible removal of them if it doesn't coincide with the proper flow of pedestrians and/or other flows of traffic?
So, Public Works or Police question?
To answer the question, no, the red light camera is not part of the study.
Not part of the study, okay.
I mean, and the board can always talk about that issue in the future, I think the chief could address it best, because he has the most history with it too as well, but, yeah, it's, it's not part of it. We may have to, I, not to, you know, this'll be a big deal, but depending on where we set our cameras, it may suspend the operation for a little bit, but there again, we'll keep the board apprised.
Okay, thank you.
Just for informational purposes too, about a year ago, the police department brought video camera excerpts from that intersection, and they reviewed at coffee with the mayor, and that might be a, something to suggest the chief to do again, but bring it forth to the board, and we can even dim the lights, and so individuals can see what happens when, at that intersection, it's pretty graphic, it truly is.
I'll bring the popcorn. It is really graphic, but entertaining, it's shocking how what people actually do.
Yeah, I'm a strong proponent of keeping the red light at that particular intersection, I think it's made a difference, but, Commander Ruggles, if you could update the statistics on the reduction of the accidents, last time we had, it was like a thirty-something percent reduction of accidents at that intersection, maybe thirty-three or four, the other one was like twenty-seven or something, maybe just update that, because there's some new board members that aren't familiar with the fact that that has a positive impact on a key intersection, it does have a lot of traffic going through there, and get complaints from people who said, "Oh geez, I got a hundred-dollar ticket for going through there," but, hey, you know, I'm happy.
Makes a difference.
I will pass them along to the chief, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, we'd be seeking a motion to authorize Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers to complete the Illinois Route 59 and 135th Street traffic study at a cost not to exceed $9,000.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Last item that I have is more of a housekeeping item than anything else, if you could go to the next slide here, it's picture of the Lockport Street pedestrian bridge, very successful project out in this location, very needed project too as well, got a picture of the ribbon cutting, and then actually a day when it's really getting a lot of use out there, it's right outside the building here, so the board's very familiar with this, this project, we did receive a million-dollar grant for the construction, so we're very pleased with that, that that did help out, and the project technically was completed in 2013. The board in 2012 did approve the relocation of the Comcast line and equipment as part of that motion too as well, so, actually, this issue has been approved before, but since it's several years forward that Comcast discovered in one of their internal audits that a, the relocation cost for the permanent relocation hadn't been paid by the village, they brought that to our attention, and you can see that this invoice, and it does match the estimate that they provided approximately three years ago, but the invoice is dated November 5th of this year, so it's kind of a formality, a housekeeping item for us to bring it to the board's attention, but we felt like internally it should be re-approved by the board, we do owe the money, we verified that, they're not charging us any penalties or interest or anything like that too as well, but they'd like to get paid for the work that was completed, so, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but it was completed, and it's one of those things, I, you know, and it's hard to say that it slipped through the cracks, I, you know, a lot of times, just like any of us, if we don't receive a bill or an invoice, things get put in a file, and you don't call up and ask and say, "Well, why didn't you send me that bill for $23,000?" And, so, it's one of those things that, just tying up the loose ends, this is the last one, I promise. Mr. Murphy is nodding, yes, this is the last one, Ellen, you promise, it better be, it better be, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Approve that we, well, move that we authorize payment to Comcast? Comcast?
Yeah, it's a fiber optic.
Oh, okay, Comcast. Where the permanent relocation of cables and other equipment at a cost of $20,307.34.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Police Chiefs report?
Yes, I have two items for the board's consideration tonight, the first is request to purchase 38 Target gift cards from Target Store at $250 each for a total value of $9,500. These cards are to be utilized during our Shop With A Cop event on December 18th, a week from Friday. These are the cards that we use to pay for the presents that the children purchase for themselves and their families during the charitable event. The money comes from the Plainfield Police Department's charitable funds account, that money is raised through donations and a partnership with Target Corporation, none, no tax dollars are used to purchase those things for the children, so, our request is that the village authorize the purchase of these cards, that we may conduct that event again this year.
We started doing this event some years ago, we never had to bring this to the village board, because our dollar amount was less than, well, less than my spending authority, so, we were able to do that administratively, however, the department and the program has become ever more successful, that now it extends beyond our purchasing authority, which is why you're seeing it come to you, it might seem like a new thing to you, but it's only because it's the department and the program's been quite a great success.
I was just out of curiosity, what was the basis for 38, why was 38 picked?
It's done by the number of children that we estimate that we will receive, we, the selection process is done in cooperation with the school district, and the school district, each school nominates children from an elementary and the high school level, and it's based in part by the number of schools, each school has a certain number of nominations that they may use, bring those forward, and then there's a couple, I believe at this point, we're at 35 or 36 children, a couple extras just to cover any incidental costs or anything, if there's an overage by some means, or something like that, so we do estimate a little bit higher on the gift cards, and then those are kept and used again the following year to cover anything.
We're not wiping out the charitable account?
No, to the best of my knowledge, it should not wipe this account out, there is a accounting process that is followed every year, Mrs. Pleckum has us put forth a number within our budget, we have to stay within that budget and amount when we do this program, so there is a line within the village's budget in the police department to show this money, however, it is basically a pass-through where we raise the money and pay it back through the village account.
Thank you.
You know, Chief Ruggles, or, no, well...
Please no.
You're the chief tonight. You're close, you're close, you're close, you're, you're very close, Commander, I'm sorry, but, you know what, the one thing I'd like to just simply say about this particular program, not only is it a good public relations situation, but there are an awful lot of people, Christmas comes and an awful lot of people, we don't realize it often, that they look at catalogs, children do, they look at catalogs, look at, watch television, but they're not part of that program, they're only looking, and you know what, this allows individuals who fall between the cracks, who have no ability to buy gifts for their family, perhaps even to buy something decent for themselves, because I know you scrutinize what is purchased, it's not just some flippant thing that has temporary nature, and this is a perfect program, it's a wonderful program, and I really have to commend you and the police department for organizing it for us in the village of Plainfield.
Thank you, sir, yes, we do encourage input from the parents of all the kids as to what they need, I have personally escorted a child on a shopping trip, and seen them purchase clothing, mostly shoes, toiletries, necessities like that that they don't have, so, it is a heartwarming event that we do every year, like I said, the volunteers from our department that step up to do this with the kids, every year, somebody gets a story that, it just melts your heart during it, so, it is a wonderful thing for all of us as well, every Christmas to remind us what the purpose of it is, so, thank you.
I'd like to second your statement, I've done it with the department I work with in New Lennox, a couple of years ago I did it, and it's true, the children will go out there with their Christmas list, and very rarely will they buy stuff for themselves, it's always, "What can I get Mom and Uncle Joe?", and it's very nice to see that the little five and six and seven-year-olds have the Christmas spirit, I think it's a great program.
Sounds to me like it's a great, great program, and it's a way for our officers and the police department to connect, you know, not only with our children in the community, but with the families as well, and knowing that, you said, at no cost to the village with all the local donations, that's a great thing, thank you.
As I said upfront, you all do a lot to support us, and we need to make sure we continue to support you, so, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Are there any other comments or questions? Not would be seeking motion to authorize the village president to approve the purchase of thirty-eight two hundred and fifty dollar Target gift cards for Shop With A Cop.
So moved.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Second item I have for the board tonight is the request to purchase DARE t-shirts, sweatshirts, and jackets from our DARE Dance-A-Thon, these items are the incentives that the children use or are offered as part of the fundraising program for the DARE program itself within our elementary schools, again, this is an item that I'm not sure if the board has seen before, but it falls under the ordinance and the fact that our purchasing has gone up over the years, more kids in the schools, more fifth graders in our DARE program, so our costs have increased every year, the purchasing amount here, it will be seven thousand eight hundred one dollars and eight cents, the DARE Dance-A-Thon this year actually raised sixteen thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents, and again, the money comes from that fundraising effort, so roughly, a little less than half will be actually used to purchase these clothing items, which are the reward for the children that engage in this program, so we will be asking that it goes through TNG Sportswear, which is a company here in Plainfield, on Hundred and Thirty-Fifth and Route thirty, they worked with us on the design that actually goes on these clothing items, and therefore it's unique to them, we've oftentimes, Mark Siegel used to do a lot of the designing himself and such to save costs and to be able to go out and shop from different vendors for a better, a better price, in order to seek some variety and to get some, some different designs, some newer designs, things like that, we've worked with some of the artwork and the artists at these clothing stores, in this particular case, since they worked with us, it would be unique to their store for us to purchase them there, so it is a single vendor item, again, the cost, seven thousand eight hundred one dollars and eight cents through TNG Sportswear, it is, again, a fundraiser event, so the money comes not from the tax base of the village, but from the money raised to help support the DARE program.
Are there any comments or questions?
I move to authorize the village, or the purchase of t-shirts, sweatshirts, and jackets from TNG Sportswear for the proposed amount of seven thousand eight hundred one dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Attorneys report?
No report this evening, thank you.
Reminders?
Reminders, December ninth is Coffee With The Mayor, December tenth will be the HPC meeting at seven P.M., December fourteenth will be our next committee to the hall at seven, and the twenty-first will be our next regular village board meeting.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session as permitted under the Open Meetings Act under Section two C six, to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, not to reconvene.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Any students need a paper signed, slide on up here and we're doing it.